Video. Is that okay? We don't have video.
Better than nothing.
You didn't, okay. Sorry.
Okay, it's seven o'clock. Call this meeting to order. First order is to appoint Jim Maderas as a voting member. Draft minutes from November sixth.
I had nothing.
One commoner question, so with the pop of sort of page three, we talked about into the work section, work session section. Potential zoning amendments Christine shared an updated version of touch.
I sent the.
Okay.
Is that for the potential zoning amendment?
Yeah.
Okay, so there is a new draft.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Well, yeah, I think I had forgotten to send it before the last meeting, but I sent it the day after. I'd like to thank all the planning board members.
Miss me again for some reason.
Well, I have a printed version for everyone tonight. I made copies for everyone.
I'll have it now.
Well, it's a newer version even than that.
Is it V two or is it a different version?
I'm I've printed version three, which I have not sent out.
Yeah, okay.
There he is, there's. V two was from the last meeting. Yeah.
Good evening, Russ.
I'm late.
We're just reviewing the minutes. Did you have anything on the minutes? Anybody else with edits or? Changes to the minutes?
Make a motion to approve the minutes as written.
Part of your vote?
I'm gonna abstain. I wasn't here.
George?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Okay, minutes are approved. Invitation for public comment. This would be a time of the meeting where we traditionally offer residents a chance to comment, but this would be other than in regards to this public hearing upcoming for all purpose storage. Any other public comment? Thank you for introducing yourself. Okay, hearing no other public comment. I will now open up the public hearing for all purpose storage expansion one oh three on route one oh one.
Use the mic.
Oh, we do. We have a wireless mic.
He does.
So as a lot of you know, we've been ongoing. This has been an ongoing hearing for several months now, and we've been working with the representative for all purpose storage Fieldstone. And so we have with us tonight Chuck Ritchie and sorry, your name.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Chad Brannon. I'm a civil engineer and principal owner with Fieldstone Land Consultants. With me tonight is Mr. Ritchie. As you may know, he's presented as one of our engineers and at the last meeting, actually John Noonan, one of our senior engineers presented as well. Unfortunately, John can be here tonight and and we just wanted to make sure we had, you know, the right people here to answer questions and concerns. There's obviously been a lot of input with this project. And I think like many projects, the review process has really worked. It's yielded a much better plan. We've been able to make significant improvements to the project. The first plan met all the requirements of the local regulations, but certainly concerns have been raised. You know, by the Conservation Commission, the South Hegan Local River Advisory Committee has made some comments. We are in receipt of their recent letter. And so what I'd like to do tonight is really talk about the storm water management design. And talk about some of the improvements that have been made and really just stress how this design, you know, far exceeds any local standards and certainly would meet, you know, state standards if state permits were necessary. And I, you know, I'm here tonight really to validate the design, but also answer any questions that, you know, the board may have. This is, you know, certainly a fair amount of details have been put into this plan. I'm not looking to discount anybody's concerns. Hopefully going to be able to address, you know, address them this evening. And so when when we were before you at the last meeting, you know, there was concerns raised from the commission relative to the positioning of the site as it relates to Blood Brook. So what I, I, you know, like to do is, you know, kind of start with a little bit of a discussion about, you know, about that, about the existing storm water, you know, on the site. And then how you know, how we're proposing to address the storm water and then talk about some details on how that system will function, how it's adequate, it's located appropriately and will really provide improvements to what exists today while mitigating the proposed, you know, development. And so, you know, currently, and I think many of you had the benefit of going on a site walk early on, it's been, you know, this, this project has spanned, you know, many meetings now. But there's essentially, you know, there's, there's drainage from the highway that comes down and kind of parallels the site. The site has two drainage swales that essentially parallel the property. Both of them head towards, you know, Blood Brook in the back. So that takes, you know, water from a larger watershed and conveys that water towards, you know, the brook. That includes the previous area of the self-storage site that was approved and, you know, vintage in the eighties. When that site was approved, there actually wasn't a was a plan to expand this facility in the back, which was also approved, but they didn't act on that. And so that approval had lapsed. I share that just because I think, you know, the background and in how we are designing now, there's, you know, significant improvements that we're not only providing for the proposed expansion, but for, you know, what exists currently. In the eighties, there wasn't a whole lot of storm water management, you know, with these site designs. So because of that, there's really no storm water management on this site currently for, you know, this portion of the site here. And where the concerns are relative to, you know, Blood Brook or adjacent, you know, tributaries or the South Hegan River or the watershed as a whole, we really need to talk about, you know, responsible storm water management and how that's addressed on all projects. And we look at that routinely as engineers, you know, on a number of sites. But specifically this evening, I want to speak to, you know, this property. And so the design that we're proposing now consists of, you know, a fair amount of improvements over the plans that were presented at the last meeting. And, you know, primarily what we've done is you have, again, this is where one of the storm water drainage channels is now, and then there's another one along the southern or excuse me, the eastern portion of the site. But we're capturing at least two thirds of this existing development and routing it through our storm water management practice now. So the storm water management for this project will mitigate, you know, existing storm water as well. Designed, sized appropriately. And so what we've added to kind of provide redundancy here is we've added a, a chamber system that'll be subterranean under the pavement. That chamber system has been designed to handle the water quality volume, which is essentially the first flush. That's how the state treats storm water. So when you think about, you know, when it starts to rain, you know, what happens, right? You get that first flush and cleans all of the, you know, the, the surface and brings that to the, you know, to the storm water management practice. We treat that water quality volume and then we start designing for larger storms and provide additional mitigation. So we have kind of a redundant system here where we have a chamber system and then that chamber system will function and then outfall into a bioretention area here. And this bioretention area has a number of design features associated with it that, that in factors of safety, frankly, that, that address larger and larger storms. And so when Mr. Noonan was here, the last meeting, we talked about, you know, we're going to design this site, you know, to meet standard engineering practices, alteration and train, you know, standards, things like that. And so we have done that. We've designed this chamber system, you know, accordingly. It'll have an isolator row. So what that means, the isolator row is a, is a row that's wrapped in fabric. It's an air, it's a, it's a row that it's kind of your first line of defense. So that has a, you know, a maintenance schedule where you go into inspections. If you have sediment accumulation, you clean that out. But that prevents sediments and such from getting to the rest of the system. So again, and there is a storm water maintenance plan that's, that's inside of our storm water management report that we submitted with this submission. And that again meets, you know, alteration of terrain, you know, standards. When it comes to the bioretention area, so this chamber system, there's two forms of outfall. There's infiltration. It'll, it'll infiltrate, you know, through, you know, all storm events, but it functions better in the smaller storms. And then when you get into the larger storms, right? You're getting more flow faster. And so now there's an overflow and that'll, that overflow will discharge into this bioretention area. The bioretention area is provides treatment through a biomat. That's a, it's a, it's a mat at the bottom of the basin where storm water flows through. It's almost like a sand filter type practice. It's a flow through system where treatment occurs through that biomat. And then, you know, it can go into the, into the groundwater from there or into the substrate. Or you can have underdrained systems that, that daylight the storm water from there, again, providing additional treatment. On top of that treatment through the soil, how this basin or this bioretention area functions is it meet, it helps to meter flow from the site as well during large storm events. So if you look at the storm water management report, you know, that we've prepared for this site, you have, you know, increasing reductions in the rate and volume of runoff. And what that means is in the narrative section of the report, you have you have a comparison pre-development and post-development. And what that, what that summary chart is intended to show is we're, we're mitigating all of those storm events. And so that table shows that we design through the fifty year storm, which means we're essentially treating water through the fifth, the storm water through the fifty year storm. So in a two-year storm, we have a duck reduction of two point four cubic feet per second. That's flow. And then we have a reduction of point two, one, five acre feet. That's volume. And so there's a reduction in volume and flow. That's, that's a good thing. That means we're mitigating, we're attenuating, we're metering that flow off the site. As you walk down through, you can get to the fifty year storm. We have a reduction in nine point two cubic feet per second flow rate. And then you have a reduction in point five nine two acre feet volume. That means we've, we're making improvements over existing conditions through the fifty year storm. Your town regulations don't require volumetric treatment and requires just twenty, I think it's a twenty year rate attenuation. So when you think about that, I mean, we have far exceeded a local requirement. This actually exceeds state design standards. If this project required an alteration in terrain or shoreline permit, this would meet their standards. And so it doesn't take away from the fact that we're close to Blood Brook. And there's, you know, it's a sensitive area. And as I said before, I'm not looking to discount, you know, someone's concerns. I'm hoping to address them through our design, you know, this evening. So when we talk about, you know, is the basin located appropriately or designed appropriately? Absolutely. You know, we have, we have appropriate slopes and berm construction on the basin. We're not too high. You know, where we're creating, you know, would be basically like a dam type structure. We're in a relatively flat area where the basin is proposed to be constructed. And then on top of that, this basin in the fifty year storm is designed to have a foot of freeboard. So what that means is from the emergency outlets, because we have two of them. There's a foot from the emergency outlet elevation to the top of the berm height elevation, elevation. And, you know, Mr. Ritchie and Mr. Noonan designed this specifically for that to ensure that we're going to handle those much larger storms. And what I mean by that is we have an emergency spillway here which, which handles emergency storms. And then we have the outlet structure here, which has a grate on top of it, which would also handle, you know, emergency storms. So we have dual outlets for any, a larger storm event design. That's not required by the state. In fact, the state requires one outfall. But because of the proximity and how we want to ensure that we're, you know, designing something that's going to be appropriate for its location, we've, you know, we've decided to build that factor of safety into the design. The primary outfall of this basin is exfiltration. So it's flow through the soil. The secondary outfall is through a covert and it's actually an outlet structure that'll meter the flow from the site. And that goes to a plunge pool, like a riprap plunge pool. And what that does is it takes concentrated flow and turns it to sheet flow. It's like a level spreader. And so that casts flow over the slope, you know, that goes down to Blood Brook. It's a good design practice, you know, rather than having a concentrated flow go, you know, over a slope. There's concerns about, you know, is this basin located appropriately? I would say as a, you know, a licensed professional engineer practiced, you know, for well over twenty five years at this point, that this is safe. And its location, it's not where we're going necessarily. It's where we are, right? We're building this on a nice, you know, reasonably flat slope. We have a number of outlets proposed and the outlets are designed to be stabilized in a controlled fashion. There is an elevation drop down to Blood Brook. Absolutely. That exists along, you know, I think a very extensive stretch here. Those, the elevation is shown detailed quite clearly on the plans. I don't think it's inconsistent with the numbers that have been raised by, you know, the South Hegan River Local Advisory, you know, Commission. It's probably about, you know, twenty eight to thirty feet. It looks like just looking at this, you know, we have twenty feet two, four, six, about twenty eight feet to the, to the drainage basin. So I would say we're, you know, pretty spot on to, you know, those numbers. But we're treating and mitigating. And because we're incorporating infiltration, we're addressing concerns relative and dual kind of redundancy, we're addressing concerns relative to temperature and environment and things like that. As I said before, this is a design that would get approved in the same, if this was the South Hegan River, this would be, this design would be permissible. It's not. The South Hegan River is about three point six miles from the site. So we're well out of a jurisdiction for a shoreline review. Again, doesn't take away from, you know, the, the, the concerns. I think they're valid. It's led to a, a really solid plan. And I think the, you know, that hopefully through, you know, some additional details and in walking through the design, we can, you know, we can address that and and hopefully move towards a, you know, approval of this project. When we look at you know, the, the storm water requirements for this project, you know, we certainly believe that, that we address any local standards or exceed any local standards. We also think we've really built in a, a, a solid plan for, you know, snow removal, adequate space for snow removal, ensuring that snow, you know, doesn't get piled in the basin. So for example, if the basin was too close to the pavement, often you'll see on sites where they'll use that for snow storage. Well, that kind of takes away some volume for snowmelt and snow mitigation and, and storm water mitigation. And so we have very adequate separation, you know, to those critical points for snow management. So we do not believe there's any issues with snow management on this site. With that said, we are willing to also incorporate the Green Snow Pro certified professionals for the site. Again, validating, you know, the location to the, to the brook. I don't think that's unreasonable. We've talked to our client. They're willing to incorporate that in into the plan. That's not currently noted on the plan. We would really hope that the board would consider that as a condition of approval if we can get to that point this evening. The I touched on, and I'm just trying to make sure I touch on a number of these, the, these concerns and I've I'm sure I'll miss some and I'm happy to answer, you know, try to answer questions as we, as we go forward. The design for this site uses the extreme precipitation numbers that the Alteration of Terrain Bureau publishes. And so we are applying the current extreme precipitation, precipitation numbers that, that they require us to do. It's not required necessarily locally. I think it's good engineering practice to use those numbers, you know, at this point. But we've, we, we have checked this, this site will pass the hundred year storm in, in larger storms. It doesn't fail during a hundred year storm. It operates, it functions, it bypasses, you know, the, you know, the rainfall. And that's, that's important. I mean, we have seen hundred year storms, you know, in this area. But we're designing for, you know, the regulations that are out there and, and checking for, you know, those large storms. So it's not something that we, you know, take lightly by any means. The there was some recommendations that the the, the South Hegan River Advisory Commission stated, one of them was improved out overflow management. I'm hoping that in talking about, you know, the redundancy and the fact that we have multiple overflows and then we have the plunge pool. We really think this site has been designed conservatively to address extreme precipitation runoff and to, to address that in a controlled, you know, fashion. The request for a cross-section, although we're happy to do that, we do not think it's necessary. The plans are to scale. They show, you know, all the details. We have standard cross-sections in our plans. If the board felt that was necessary, we'd be happy to do that. Again, we would hope that you would consider that as a condition of approval, just because it's, you know, it's certainly just an additional detail. Any contractor that our client would, you know, award this to. And I just want to clarify too, there's, there's a lot of inference to, you know, Las Vegas based company. This is our largest client as a New Hampshire based. New Han, we do work in New Hampshire, Mass, Maine and Vermont. But the owner of this company is from Litchfield, New Hampshire. They have offices in an establishment in Keene. We do a lot of development for them throughout the state and New England. And so although they have a Las Vegas address, that's not necessarily, you know, where they're rooted and where they're doing, the majority of their work is actually done here in New Hampshire. And so they're local. They have an office, headquarters in Keene. And I want to share that because their whole team comes out of there, meaning they have a maintenance division. They have a security division. They have their sales division is in Keene. Very local, close to here. So they are equipped and suited for, you know, taking care of this site and many other sites that they own, you know, throughout this region. And I say that because there's concerns raised relative to ma- maintenance and, and I think there's some inference to them maybe not being local, but they are in fact, you know, have, they have a very strong presence in this area. And then one recommendation is require seasonal maintenance schedule. Again, that's in, in the storm water management report. So I think we have built that in. I think it's a really good comment. The additional or enhanced filtration layers in the basin, we actually have that. We are enforcing alteration of terrain, recommended a biomat, you know, for the bottom of that basin. We're not doing a bio, a bio char. But it's that we offer two forms of filtration, both of which are, you know, we've done all over, you know, the state of New Hampshire through that alteration of terrain review and, and permit. So I think we really address on, you know, we've addressed that in the design. There was also some concerns raised from a, in a butter. I wish, you know, she could attend because she would find that I'm going, I'm the one that personally met with her and reviewed this project when we were going before the zoning board for the relief and she signed a, at that time she had signed a letter, but she shared similar concerns and we talked about them. And so that's the lady, and I I'd have to, thank you very much, Christie Reed. She, you know, has the business and resides here. And what I had shared with her was that you can see here our limit of clearing line is, you know, a ways into the property. This is the boundary of the property here. And so we're maintaining, you know, this vegetation through here. We are proposing some additional landscaping through here in the plan. But you know, I think that there's, there's been a lot of dialogue around this project, a lot of concerns relative to storm water. So she certainly mentions those. We think we've mitigated that. A very nice woman, very valid, again, valid concerns. She had a concern about lighting. The only lighting we have, you know, facing this direction is they have three. They're basically wall stances. I mean, all they do is light the side of the building. They don't cast into the drive aisle. There will not be any light pollution, not even close as it relates to this. It's, it's modest security lighting. And that's what I explained, but I, you know, as time goes on, those concerns, they come back and that's okay. And so I think we've really, we've maintained the plan, the exact plan that we presented to her when we, we, we secured her signature and, and I just want to state for the record that, you know, those have been concerns and design objectives as we've carried this plan forward. And so I feel like there was one more that she mentioned. I just want to make sure I don't miss anything.
And she had sort of water flow onto her land was.
Sure. Yep. So with the waterfall, we're reducing any water flow in the easterly direction. We have a curved, you know, paved area here, closed drainage section. This is routed to the chamber system and then to the bioretention and then outfalling, you know, to the north towards, you know, Blood Brook. So we're definitely reducing the area in the, in the runoff in her direction. But, but certainly valid question and, and want to make sure it was addressed for the record. So thank you very much for bringing that up.
Do you know how wide the vegetative buffer is now between the property line and
Well, there's no, there's no development there.
Right.
Right. So I mean, the whole site is vegetated.
But we had represented this same distance to her and the position of the home being so far away, you know, and, and the vegetated buffer that we will have resulting is about seventy feet, you know, along this entire section right here. Down here, there's a fill, like we transitioned on the site. It's a fill down here. So the site will be elevated through here and we do have, you know, some landscaping proposed along this higher side to help shield that, that corner. But her concern initially was making sure we're maintaining the buffer through here. And then what we had kind of stated to her is we're essentially folding that same line, you know, for the buffer as we expand, you know, to the north so that in You know, for the buffer as we expand, you know, to the north, so that in in in. You know, she signed the letter at the time. She was quite comfortable with that. She did not have to sign the letter. Everybody here is probably familiar with the process of getting a commercial project approved. In town. I mean, we had to have the butters, you know, support with that zoning process. And so. That's a summary of the plan revisions that we've made since the last plan. It's primarily. Was a stormwater effort. I know. Uh, Mr. Noonan was suggesting, hey, can we do this as a conditional approval? I think it was probably a good idea that it wasn't done considering. All the questions and stuff. And so. Um, we think this is a good plan. It meets all of your local regulations. Um. You know, exceeds them from a stormwater standpoint, certainly, and. And we hope that we can answer any additional questions or concerns and and can. Um, secure a uh conditional approval this evening. But so with that, I'd be happy to try to answer any questions that the board may have.
Can you um speak to how the stormwater gets into the system? Is it, is it, are there um? Drainage in the pavement is, are there gutter system? How how will it get down in there?
Yeah, no, great question. So. Um, this client typically does do guttered uh buildings. And I say that because every, every developer does things a little bit differently. And so that'll take the roof runoff and kind of cast it onto the paved surface. So you don't have, and they do that because in the winter. Here we have, you know, a freeze cycle. And if you, if you have that splashing action, it'll actually freeze doors shut on. On uh self-storage humans and not very customer friendly. And so they typically have, you know, a gutter system. And then we do have catch basins in the. Uh, pavement. So those are open, just like you'd see in a parking lot. Open grate system that'll capture the runoff. Those catch basins do have a sump in them. Um, you know, so you get sediment capturing there. Um, and then ultimately they're connected together and tied to that chamber system. Um, so that chamber system is the first line of defense for the majority of the stormwater on the site. And then it would go to the bioretention system. And then, you know, out into the, you know, the uh discharge out from there to, you know, the adjacent areas.
And and the discharge from the bioretention is. That I think you said it went, it goes down or it can go out through an outlet? Is that?
That's correct.
So typically, like in a smaller storm. It will go.
Smaller storms, it would, it would infiltrate into the ground. And, you know, you get that, that additional filtering through the biomat. Um, in the larger storms, we have what's called the secondary outlet, which would be. Um, you know, the outlet structure. And so that's going to handle. But basically all storms, you know, through the fifty year storm. The, the next outlet would be emergency control outlets, um, and that would be your emergency spillway and then the top grate of the. Um, of the outlet structure. You'll see, if you look at the stormwater management report, you're not going to see flow, you know, going out those, those emergency. Uh, structures because we have that freeboard elevation there. And that's. That, the, when you look at a stormwater management report and you see increasing reductions. That means it's sized appropriately. If you see a situation where. You know, it, it actually sized conservatively. If you see a situation where the. Uh, stormwater reductions are getting, you know, going the other way, then you're, you're essentially dealing with a system that's. Only designed for small storms. That's not what we have here. And that's one of the things I really want to stress. Um, because it was, you know, a very large concern raised a number of times. And I would say, you know, there's, there is a request for a third party engineering review. I mean, just myself, right? So I've had three engineers work on this project, you know, Mr. Ritchie, Mr. Noonan, and now. Myself, you know, being involved and reviewing everything. Um, I know there's very knowledgeable, you know, people on the board. It, there's. The, the local requirements are, you know, much lower standard than what we have here for our design. There's no state permitting requirements. I mean, I'm an engineer of record. I'm licensed in, you know, four states. I personally do not think there is a justification or a need. Uh, for a project and I, and I don't want to. Sound like I'm, you know, being de minimis here, but the. It, it's a, it is a small expansion in in relation to a lot of projects. And, you know, we really think we've been conservative and overdesigned this uh to really try to address. You know, concerns. And so we're hoping the board would, you know, would be sensitive to that. There's additional cost that we don't. See a lot of gain from third party reviews when we've designed to, you know, sites to exceed. You know, certain standards. I mean, what would they be reviewing it against? I mean, it's. It, it exceeds all local i- in-state standards. And so it's a. That's just my opinion. I just want to. You know, sort of plead with the board. Hopefully, I'm really hoping we can. Be successful this evening. I've essentially, myself and Mr. Noonan have convinced our client that. You know, this is the right thing to do. And, you know, let's go in here and and and, you know, overdesign this site and try to. Try to address everybody's concerns. And so we're, we're hoping they see some benefits in that.
So. I understand all that, but the um, can we just go back to the design? So the outlet pipe that you're talking about and you mentioned. So it's not going to drain like directly down. It's going to disperse the water on the hillside, right? Because that's a. Going down.
Correct. So there's a plunge pool. And so basically what a, the the riprap plunge pool is, is it's. It's a, it's a, it's a hole on the outlet side. So you have concentrated flow that would. Would dump into that, that uh small, it's like a scour pool. That dissipates the energy of the stormwater and allows it to cast over the lip. It'd be, it would be sheet flow going over the, you know, over the edge of the, of the riprap. You know.
Is that like concrete or something that's, it's made of or?
No, it's got a, it's got a fabric under the stone to make sure there's no soil loss. And then you have, it's, it's essentially, they call it a D six, uh, D six uh riprap. Or on uh DOT would be like a class one stone. Or class two stone where it would be essentially six inch minus stone. So it's got a good blend. It will compact and really provide, you know, appropriate erosion and sedimentation controls. We don't make that vegetated because it's going to seawater. And so we want that to be intact. That's why we put the fabric behind it. I mean, over time, vegetation might grow a little bit through. The riprap like you see on, you know, some roadside ditches, but, but it's designed to be uh very stable and to provide. You know, uh, you know, distribution of of flow.
There's a microphone right there, Lincoln.
Right. Uh, when, when the water flows over that. Lip, how broad is the lip? How many feet wide is it compared to? The collection area of the surface of impervious material.
Sure. So the, I think the. The length of the lip is about ten feet. And then the, the, how broad it is, is about two to three feet. And so it casts over, you know, an area about ten feet wide. And so you have water coming out. You know, a covert, um, and then it turns from that concentrated flow to, you know, casting. Over the, that, that breadth.
All right. So in a fifty year storm, how many inches high would be the water? The volume that comes over the lip, can you? Is that answerable?
I don't know if I have that data. Um, but I can tell you, I mean, so basically. Your, your covert is the, is the, the, that capacity that broad crested weir, if you will. Is going to far exceed the capacity of that covert. So it's going to build and take that and cast it over. I would, I would be speculating, but my guess would be in a fifty year storm, you're probably looking at, you know. Three to four inches of water potentially casting over that, you know, in a really large storm. That might be even excessive, but. You know, it's going to function, you know, appropriately. We've been doing these designs for a, a long time and this is, this is a good design.
And then as it. Flows over that lip. The grade below that, is that very steep?
Um, the ra- the grades where the uh scour, the, that area is, is not steep. Um, but about. Probably twenty to twenty-five feet from that area. It does, it does get steeper and that's where it drops down to the, you know, to the river.
And that, that shelf there, is that sufficient to, to broaden it and spread it out before it gets to the steep?
I do believe it is, yes.
And is that vegetated?
Everything's vegetated, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Great, thank you.
Yep, no problem.
Um, I have a question. Um, so FEMA has not mapped Temple yet for flood hazard areas, but we have seen preliminary maps. Which are on our website. And the area around that brook is going to be a special flood hazard area once the maps are finalized. So. Again, nothing in our zoning. But I'm wondering if you would do anything differently if you knew that you were. Adjacent to a special flood hazard area or would this design? Meet whatever requirements would be.
Yeah, no, that's a great question. So um, because of the relief from the brook to the site. We would not change anything with our design here. If we had, you know, three or four feet of relief. Here, then, you know, there would be a lot more interest in, you know, where's the flood plain versus where's the floodway? Um, you know, you never, you really can't do anything in a floodway. Um, and I would expect that, you know, that's going to be really. You know, within the first four feet down by the brook itself. Um, in, in, in this area. Um, so no, I wouldn't anticipate that changing anything with this design.
Randy, did you uh? Want to speak at this time? Microphone right there, Randy.
I have um three different things that I wanted to discuss tonight.
Randy's uh, it's gonna be Randy's in a butter uh, uh, on Blood Brook if you had.
I think I met with Randy way back when. Did I, we meet up at the? The, is your property up in the back? Here we met at the um, kind of the lodge.
Yes, yes, okay. Thank you. Um, I want to preface that I know everyone needs a storage area and I know that, you know, that kind of thing. But I did want to just go through a couple of things with it. Three parts, so kind of bear with me a little bit. Um, the first part really is directed towards the planning board. And if you guys have the big plan. You have that with you. Um, if you could go to page five. Oh, sorry. So, and this would be pretty much um. For me to understand it better, really what the. What the um planning board requires and what the ZBA requires for the record. Um, and for me. Um, as far as this area, and I can actually come up and go through it with you. Um. This is the property line. Uh, this is page five. Okay, maybe I have a different set. Anyway, so this is all woods right now. Pretty much from here over. And um. The thought is to cut pretty much to the stone wall. All the way around and. Um, open that up. So what, what is your understanding as far as the regulations with the planning board? Of what can be cut from the property line? Is there a thirty-five foot setback or is there a commercial thing or? What is your, what is your ruling on that?
So the special exception standards say that appropriate buffering landscaping shall be provided within the setback areas of the type and amount. Deemed appropriate by the planning board during a site plan review.
Okay. So if this goes right up to the wall, what do you deem as appropriate for a buffer for me?
So I, I looked up um all of this this afternoon. So. Our zoning, it varies anywhere from. Ten feet if it's a telecommunications.
Right, I saw that, yeah.
To a hundred feet um for an existing dwelling in a PRD.
Right.
So the, it, there's a wide range. So I guess that would be for us to decide. I mean, it's thirty-five feet from the road, seventy-five feet. For long streams in a mountain conservation district. And fifty feet for a wetlands buffer.
Okay. So most of those things don't match up with the brook being right there. And I'm not trying to be, I'm just trying to, for the record, know what the planning board is uh doing with this. Um. So I think that needs to be one thing that we can discuss and decide. If it does get cut right to the wall. Um. And the uh other thing is. So if you look at that and it's existing, and I'd be happy to walk with anyone on the site. Um. That's probably eight foot high door. If you put three of those doors up. The top of the ceiling here is where the top of. This site on the end of the building is. And it goes down twenty-eight feet down. For forty foot length. So if you go to the end of that. End of the room, this is the slope that is created from here to there. So it's a pretty significant slope and. It's, it's hard for me as the butter. To not only look at that slope, look at the lights of the building, look at the potential runoff. And it's not that, I've been on planning board for twenty-seven years and have done a lot of things. So I'm not being critical. I'm just concerned. That. With the lights up here, the thirty foot slope from this corner down to here. Um, and our property goes here. I have a building that's been here for thirty-five years on this side. That is actually eye level to it, three hundred feet away. Um, so that, this whole area concerns me because. Um. It's going to be white smoke and open. Um, this. Is quite a large area here that's going to be opened. So I just want to. Have something on record with the planning board of how you decided. Whatever you decide for. That area from the end of the building over the property line. So we can talk about that. Um, there's no planning, there's no mitigation of site. From the properties. Um, the only planning is on this little easterly corner. Uh, right here, it's on the other page. But it's pine trees and one other plant right here. So I'm going to be looking at the end of your building with ten lights and. A retention pool. And this whole slope goes down at least thirty feet straight down. And I, I'm not being critical. I just. Really urge you guys to walk this with me or look at it with me. Um, because I think that it's, it's something that. Maybe people just don't realize. Um. And I'm not sure that. The alteration of terrain. Starting with this area here all the way back is not more than a hundred thousand square feet. And that in itself needs a permit. And that's not even the EPA permit. So I don't know if this is. Going too quickly or. Without consideration. Of those things. Um, I know that you don't want to have another applicant, I mean, another um. Expert look at. The applicant's. Plan. But I do know that. When the planning board decides something. That is kind of in this area with a lot of different. Elements that are pretty much. Undetermined, um. It may be a good idea to do that. It's only in my opinion. Um, so that's the first part of this. And I didn't know if anyone had any questions for me.
Can. Can I address some of those?
Sure.
Questions, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
So. When, when we went forward with the zoning process, we, we met and I believe your place is well over five hundred feet. Away um from the project because you signed a letter. In support of, you know, the project. And so the. You know, the, what I would like to point out is we're definitely under a hundred thousand square feet. We've run the math. We can certify to that. There's no alteration of terrain, you know, triggers on uh this project. The. Slope out the back um has been designed specifically to, again, meet and exceed. Um, you know, engineering standards, actually alteration of terrain or permit has standards for slope design. Um, and so you can see we have a drainage bench. On that slope, which is a ten foot bench, which addresses, you know, ensures that we're capturing runoff, doesn't.
So, so let me interrupt you for a second. Um, this part of it is not concerning the water flow. So, so let me interrupt you for a second. Um, this part of it is not concerning the water flow, this is concerning the visual.
That's fine, but I want to address stability and then, and then um, you know, from a visual standpoint, you know, we have, it's my understanding that, you know, we we're not going right to the line, I think we have, you know, minimum of five feet. But also, there's areas that you can't build on between that area, I'm meaning us or adjacent properties, like there is the uh, wetland buffer, there's a setback from the brook. And so there are natural vegetated areas that would remain regardless of what anybody wants to do. And so, we, I thought when we talked, you, we talked about that. It was a long time ago, probably a couple of years ago.
Right.
But we talked about how there would be absolutely a natural buffer because of the brook that runs through there. And so, I just want to say that we, we believe there's a substantial natural buffer that would remain there. But to your point, yes, the elevation, we are up in elevation, um, but the lighting, it's not parking lot lighting. Literally, the lighting is just on the side of the building. And so, I, it it, all these are are wall sconces that light just the building. Yeah.
What is the height of the building?
Sixteen feet. Just above the doors, so the doors that are about like a nine-foot height. So it's a pretty low set light, say nine and a half feet.
Right, because I just drove by Ben Sugar Sack.
Right, but that's parking lot lighting, completely different type of lighting.
That's why I'm here, because I'm gaining knowledge.
No, that's great.
So, well, let's talk about the lighting. So there's ten lights spec for this. Uh, you've kind of looked at leaving that buffer on the west easterly side towards the roof, the reeds place. Then on the back of the building, there's one lane. And um, that because of the elevation of the building and the way that the land is, is very high for for me.
We, we would be happy to remove that backlight, I mean, literally just security lighting.
Right.
Um, but I don't think there would be a safety issue by removing that backlight.
Doors back there or there, I think.
I don't believe there are. Um, there might be a couple of doors on the back.
I think it's just parking spots there.
Yeah, I don't believe there are, I think it's, yeah, there are a few doors on the back side. Which is right here, is a, there's four doors. Um, but the light doesn't have to be there. I mean, there's no lights internally in the building, so it's not really set up for nighttime use. I mean, people are allowed to access their stuff, but if they open the door, there's no light on the inside of the building.
So a couple of quick questions for the operating time on the plan, on the lighting thing, I think it's page six. No, what I was hoping we could think about was to delete the twenty-four seven operating time, which really doesn't make sense anyway in the lighting notes on the right-hand side.
So, what that note says, I think in totality, is it says that fifty percent of the lights, or the uh, the lights will be reduced by fifty percent for security lighting in half of the wall packs will be um, motion censored, meaning after a certain time, and I think it says ten PM aft, I mean, we could, we could, we could lower that. But um, after a certain time, fifty percent of the lights will be shut off.
Okay.
And it'll only be motion.
Would we, we be able to ask as a condition for the lights to definitely be off until ten PM and and they would turn on at ten PM and off at six PM? And not sooner than that? In other words, not twenty-four seven?
Can we just clarify that, I'm sorry?
If, in the notes, could we have it as a condition, it says it may be on at ten PM and off at six PM, and I think that's fine, but if they're on the whole time, to at least have a little bit of darkness until ten PM.
Can we, can we just make them so they're motion, like we can, so that if somebody was there, like it would be just security, it comes on with motion?
That's fine.
I would prefer to at least have some security element. I mean, I'm happy to say there would be motion after, you know, um, ten PM.
That's fine, that would be great. And then if you put omit the backlight, that'd be awesome. What is exposure to lighting? So, is that making up for there? Uh, the number four, I don't know if that is.
Yeah, so it's, it's, it's a basically just a security sconch, so it's not, this is the light that's proposed, they're very small, they're about this wide, they're about that thick, and
This is the light.
Right. So, but it's important to, that's, I mean, they're LED, so they are bright, but they're, they're gonna be on a wall and shine down. I mean, so I mean, that's pretty modest commercial lighting.
But if there, if it's eliminated on the back wall, Randy, the the wall that faces your property?
If it's not in the back wall, then they're motion censored.
And they're motion censored.
And we're happy to do that. I believe it's, is it gray, it's gray. Yeah, the wall is a, it's a, I believe a gray, um, their kind of standard colors are earth tone, but gray, grays.
So it's just, it's just the reason why I started this, and it's not a criticism, but it's absolutely dark and beautiful out there now. And all of a sudden, you have ten of these lights that are in the middle of kind of nowhere.
Yeah.
And um, they're up that high because of the building height and we're straight across to see those lights, it's pretty discouraging, is my feeling for for me. So I know we can work with it, and a good example was the um, Red Granite, which is next to you guys. They put up a bunch of lights and I saw the things that were accepted there, and and there was some restrictions, but not enough. And so I went to the resorts and I said, can we put just a shield around them? We got it, and we did that, and it was perfect. It was just a little glow in the woods and it was awesome. And so, I'm hoping we can help with this together. And then the other thing is the um, um, before you guys, but if there's anything that we can help with um, with during the buffer.
Randy, do you have a microphone?
I just think that there's a good way to um, just kind of change that a little bit so that there's not only um, a visual buffer, but it really is, if all that water comes in there and it's five hundred and forty feet from the present building, it's already a gully wash between the highway and the building. I mean, there's trees with bare roots that have fallen over and open dirt in the middle of the woods, five hundred and forty feet from the building. And I'm not that concerned, I'm more concerned about the light and the proximity than the gully wash. But it is, it is, I mean, even the whole stone wall is moving. So I just hope that that works.
Yeah, and I, and I will say, right now, I mean, they're just straight drainage channels right from the highway.
Mm-hmm.
You know, so it's a, it's a racetrack for stormwater.
Right.
It's not what we have here, which is chamber system, bioretention. I mean, all of those features are holding, you know, the water and metering it. And so it takes that energy away. And, you know, frankly, that, that's what a good stormwater design is going to do is break the, you know, break the water up, hold it. Time is the biggest thing with stormwater.
Right.
You have to add time to the system and that helps kind of meter and takes the pressure off. Um, it addresses erosion, sedimentation and 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 rates of of runoff. And so, we really have built that into here. I mean, and that's what I meant, and I appreciate you bringing that up because that's what I meant by, we're really improving the existing condition through the implementation of of these design features. And so, um, I think that, you know, as a, as a stormwater professional, um, certainly we believe that this is going to be a large improvement and it will mean, it will allow for that buffer to remain, you know, intact.
Would there be any way to, I know it's just a totally steep slope and there's nowhere else to put it. I mean, I was gonna offer you guys land over here, but go straight down there too to do that. Is there any way to pull this back a little bit, just? So it's, I mean, it's, it's flat, but that's just gonna be tree roots when you're done with that.
Yeah, I mean, so the, we're, I mean, you really don't want any, you know, trees or anything to grow on the burrs. I mean, that would compromise the stability and drainage. I mean, what we could, what we could do and we would be, you know, maybe willing to incorporate is, you know, planting some, um, you know, behind the guardrail system, maybe we could plant a few evergreens up there.
Happy to help in any way that I can with this.
But my clients vary neighborly, I mean, I think we meet all the regulations, we're happy to, you know, to position a couple of evergreens.
Guys too, is the thing.
Well, this is, I mean, we really trying to balance a lot of needs here relative to, you know, we have residential properties really close to us up by one-on-one. Trying to, you know, maintain buffering there. And so that forces the site to be a little bit longer to to get the square footage. This is less square footage than what the original approval was, but we're balancing a whole different set of regulations and and interests.
And I also know that pretty much all this soil here is Marlowe soil, and that does not drain at all, it's like clay. So it's, you know, those are the kind of things that I think about, only because I've been there so long and know the, know the place pretty well. Um, anyway, that's my two cents worth and um, any other questions or if people want to walk it with me, I'd be happy to do that. And that's it. Thank you.
We're happy to, if the board wants to consider that a condition, motion and the backlight would be.
I'm Camilla Lockwood, and I'm sort of the representative to the Sauhigan River Local Advisory Committee from Temple. And I just want to ask a couple of questions near your plan there, please. Can you tell me where it is that, um, from here, this has to be raised, the um, built up underneath? Where does that start?
So the raising starts, um, so the site is high, you know, kind of through here. So we're raising it slightly on this downhill side, this is a little bit of a fill here. And then, you know, the, the site turns into a fill like right here. So that's where this corner gets filled. You can see the existing topography kind of falling off uh, right there. And that's primarily done, you know, with a building like this, we have to have emergency access around all sides. So access drives, you know, those, those improvements too. And then, in this fill area, that's where we're doing a lot of that infiltration and stormwater, you know, mitigation. Um, which is, which is a good opportunity to get, you know, to get some of that, that work.
What I was wondering is, how much, how much fill are you going to, I was over there and the the slope is, Randy said it's extraordinary. And um,
Yeah.
How much, what are you gonna put in there? Because anything that's in there is gonna get into the brook. You clean fill was a popular, but he's not around much anymore.
Yeah, no, there's a, so our client owns a property in Peterborough. Um, they just did a self-storage facility over there, um, and they have a, a sand resource there, so they planned on bringing some material from there.
How much will it be though?
Um, I don't have the exact number on, you know, what the fill requirement is, I don't have that with me, but, you know, it's, it will require some materials to be imported. All construction sites require select materials to be imported, but it will be clean fill.
Okay, my, my second thought was, though, a lot of things are built on pilings instead, which would eliminate all of that and would, you know, if this ever had to be removed or altered, instead of having huge impacts of, of permanent piles of soil and all of, you know, it impacts so much and I don't know if anybody's been down there, I was down there with Randy. This is an absolutely extraordinary area. It's, there's escars where his place is, and then it drops down into the valley, really the valley of the, of Blood Brook, because before the flood control dam, this was a rushing, really major stream. And even now, right now, it's, it's still a trickle, even this this drought, but it's rather narrow, maybe ten feet wide. But when Randy tells me that in flood times, despite the dam, this thing widens into a couple more streams. And then, woof, up goes, you know, thirty feet of serious slope. You're practically on your hands and knees climbing up it. There are two major washout gullies that go down. And then there's the wall, and then after the wall, up it goes again. And, you know, this is a rare place, I, this is a steep slope. And, you know, I'm not sure that just mountains, steep slopes should be called steep slopes. But there's some provision with DES that uh, slopes of over twenty-five percent are entitled to some consideration. And I just feel that this is such a even done well, and I don't, I'm not denying the well, and I'm not denying probably that the water system works. But coming down and, you know, is that, is that the wall, that's the wall. It's some, it, it kind of just, it's gonna change that neighborhood forever. And I just, maybe it could, could just be cut back a little bit, does it have to be this big? Does it have to be that long? Does it have to? You know, it's, it'll be there long after we are, if anybody's around at all. That's all. I've been involved with rivers for a very, very long time. I was involved with the Rivers Council early on. I was with the Exeter River, and I've watched so many impositions and our beautiful streams. Blood Brook is not a river, it does not rise to a standard of river protection. However, our tributaries, and this is a significant tributary, is what creates the quality of rivers, because this is where the dirt comes from, this is where the pollution comes from, this is where the problems come from, and there's no protection to speak of. Um, I just want to put in a pitch for the river. Thank you.
And I, I guess I would just respond to that if I may, Mr. Chairman, and just say, um, I don't disagree with, uh, you know, some of the concerns, but we really have built in kind of the belts and suspenders for the design, you know, for the site. Um, we're not disturbing, you know, uh, you know, really steep slopes on the property. Um, we are gonna be bringing in some material to construct the site. Um, but we do meet all of the local, you know, regulations and, and again, we've, we've, we've really tried to go above and beyond with the stormwater management here, uh, understand and appreciate the concerns. Understanding and appreciating the concerns.
Do you know what is the slope now and what will it be once you're done? At what percentage?
Yep, so um, the slope I mean, so the slope varies throughout the site, um.
Well, I mean, I guess mainly in the back area that I'm, we're concerned about.
The slope right now in the steepest part, like right here, is about thirty-three, you know, percent or so, which is about a three to one slope. That's like a roadside ditch, um, type slope. And that's actually, that's the steepest that will have it on, you know, site as well. And so that's this slope here, you know, basically, and we are filling. This plan actually shows it better. The building is positioned, you know, like right here on this flat area. It's the access around that drives that fill slope. And so that's what, um, you're looking at, you know, here. And so you have this, you know, this slope here. Uh, but again, we have, you know, the appropriate benching and, and stabilization. We have erosion control, you know, matting, um, proposed for them. And so this is a standard, you know, construction, um, slope. But we're not creating, you know, we're working with the topography. We're not creating something that really doesn't exist today. It just exists in a slightly different location. It's right here now and, and we're gonna be proposing it right here. It's hard to explain some of this stuff, so I hope I addressed it.
Yeah, I was, um, the, the, so the retention pond. Uh, what did you call the overflow, um, it went, it goes to the six inch minus, uh, the rip rap basically?
Yeah, that would be like the secondary outlet.
The secondary, yeah, for extreme storms and.
Yeah, for, I mean, you'll get, we'll get flow out of that in like the ten, twenty-five year storm. Um, anything below that, we're gonna primarily be infiltrating, you know, the water through that biomat in the chamber system.
Yeah, but just common sense, it makes sense that it's good, it's good that you've done that. Uh, and it makes sense to anybody that drives down one-on-one through Wilton on the sides of the road, uh, where they have all that larger, it's not six inch minus, twelve inch, but after the Wilt Recycling Center on the right. So everybody drives that all the time. If you're trying to visualize what this is gonna look like, it, it's just a lot of rocks. Um, that, like you said, won't grow vegetation. They might over a lot of years, but, um, but with the filter fabric under that. So that's what, that's what stops, uh, the fear of erosion.
Absolutely.
And all that soil getting into the brook.
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, and that, and that, so you call it, what do you call it, splosh? Uh, what's it called, the technical term of the?
Like the spillway or a, a scout? It's like a level spreader, a broad crested weir is essentially what it acts like. Um, but it's imperative to have the filter fabric below the, the stone. Cause you'll still have the transportation of sediments, you know, if you don't have that. And that's detailed appropriately, you know, on construction details.
And, and that's for the extremes. If you had to guess, this year was a pretty easy year, light year for us, but for precipitation. But what would, what would your guess be on an average year that that would be utilized?
Um, I would say, you know, it's going to be utilized in like the twenty-five year storm events. Um, you know, and that's, you know, twenty-five year, I think that's like five inches per hour. Uh, or excuse me, inches per twenty-four hour period is, is what, you know, that frequency would be. We've seen that. I mean, but you're gonna, you know, it's important to design for these, these storms. And, uh, you know, so that's what we have here. But you, you will see flow out that secondary. I don't think you're gonna see flow out the emergency, you know, overflows. And that's just speaks to the capacity of the base.
I, I just wanted to clarify that you said existing conditions now. Um, the flow goes from one-on-one down essentially two channels into Blood Brook.
Yeah.
So it's kind of a straight flow from all the pollutants on one-on-one.
Absolutely.
And what this is going to do is reduce
Yeah.
the amount of flow and capture a lot of the nutrients and pollutants and stop them before they get to Blood Brook. That's correct.
Absolutely. And so the, the, in particular, I, you know, the, the channel on the west side of the site that runs, you know, through the site currently and, and is probably one of the areas I, I, that's eroding, you know, that slope. Um, we're intercepting that and routing it into the bioretention area. And so that's an immediate improvement over what is, is currently happening.
We noticed on our sidewalk that there was one place down by the stone wall. It's like the stone wall's caving right in.
Yeah.
There's a lot of erosion right there. So I'm assuming this will address that. Are you gonna do anything like shore up the wall on that spot or make it so it's not gonna continue to erode over?
Yeah, I mean, I think when we're, when construction's occurring down there, I mean, we're, we're gonna be intercepting the majority of the flow that's contributing to that area. Um, you know, with it being a boundary wall, we just gotta be careful about manipulating that. But, uh, um, certainly, you know, the goal would be to shore up, you know, any of those areas.
Can you talk a little bit about the, um, construction schedule and what, uh, you know, mitigation you use during construction before all of this is built? Where would water go? And when do you, I, I know you're not approved yet, but when were you hoping to start?
Sure. So we've talked to the client. I mean, because of, you know, the season and such, I mean, this is, this will be a spring, you know, project, you know, at best at this point. Um, um, that's what I'm told. Now, that can change, but, uh, you know, we do many projects through winter construction. It's just, it gets more expensive, you know, for people. So they often at this time will wait till spring. Um, the procedure, I mean, we do have construction sequence notes and stuff like that in the plan. But generally speaking, you know, the first thing that happens is you would cut the property. You don't stump it, um, but you cut the trees. Um, and then you put your perimeter erosion and sedimentation controls up. And then you start, you know, stomping, you know, the site. And that way you have erosion control measures there. Um, this project, and I think Randall mentioned, uh, um, this will trigger, um, what's called an EPA Stormwater Notice of Intent. Um, and that's triggered by one acre of land altering activity. Um, all that really, you put together a stormwater management plan. This plan set will be used. And then there's a package that goes along with it. The site contractor that's picked for the project and the landowner are built into the stormwater management plan. They certify to follow best management practices. And then we, an EPA now requires certified inspectors. So we, we do all the inspections for this particular developer. And so we are out weekly visiting sites like this and checking perimeter controls and seat construction sequencing and, and ensuring that the plan is followed. We prepare, it's kind of an independent report as a, as a certified entity. Um, you know, we prepare that report. We, it, it, it'll be in a binder on site and it'll be, you know, a copy will be with our office. Um, and then, you know, generally speaking, just kind of walking through a site like this, you would, you would install this, uh, you know, this bioretention area would be installed first. During construction, it's gonna act as more of a sediment, uh, basin area. So, uh, we won't put the biomat in, um, but we'll put that basin in and that just captures the area. It, it, it's essentially a, um, it's a line of defense. So we will meter flow out of this through, uh, like, uh, stone check dams or hay bales or, you know, things of that nature so that we're controlling flow, you know, during, um, storm. We'll have stone check dams in the, in the swales that again, uh, you know, just slows, uh, stormwater through the construction, you know, phase. And then, you know, when the site is generally constructed, you know, you go back and the chamber system, if it's built, you don't let flow go to a chamber system until the site's stable. So until it's paved, um, basically in that, otherwise we'd be cleaning out that isolator on day one. And so you, you, you really will, will be utilizing the bioretention area during construction as a temporary, um, sediment, you know, control area. Um, and then, once, you know, once the systems, you know, got into a point, we'll dredge that out. The biomat will go in, we'll make sure that that's functioning appropriately. Um, we document all that through the inspections. Um, and you'll, you know, you, the site, site's not technically considered stable until there's eighty-five percent vegetation. So we do those inspections all the way until that point. And then you file a notice of termination with EPA, letting them know that the site's been built, you know, according to the plan. So it's not, it, it, there is, there is oversight, there is guidance, um, throughout the process. Um, that's a great question, you know, so there's, it's very detailed approach to these projects.
Right, well, I, I bring it up for a couple of reasons. One is, um, if you, this project was being done in its entirety. In other words, we didn't have the small area, we had the small area and the large area. It would trigger different regulations in our zoning because it would be considered large scale development.
Yeah.
And some of those things that you mentioned are, would be required. So I'm just curious, I was, you know, one, I know I read your plan here, but I was curious what your plan was beyond that. Um, will you be removing the stumps? Is everything coming offsite?
Um, typically the stumps do get removed. They either get removed or ground and used for erosion or, or, uh, slope stabilization. Um, yeah, they, we will, we're not planning on burying any, you know, stumps here. That's really not appropriate, you know, onsite in any of these locations, so.
What's a setback from the stone wall?
What do you mean from the property line to, to?
The boundary wall, yeah.
To, to what?
Well, so the, the special exception criteria, it says a hundred feet from a building. Right? Or is it a property line? It might be a property line, cause I, I think it's a hundred feet from the property line to the new building.
To the building, it's just a structure setback.
So it doesn't, the, the rest of the stuff can be anywhere, right up to the edge?
Yeah, I mean, the stone wall is existing, so our zoning encourages keeping the stone walls where they are.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, um, if there, there's a number of storage units in this area, as you probably know. If this gets delayed, say for X number of periods of time, I think the, the water review should be, the water management should be reviewed. Because if we continue to have increasing, increasing storms, just the, the problem may increase. Just a thought, that's up to the planning board. And my other question is, are you gonna blow up that big rock?
Well, anything in the construction zone would be, you know, if, if, it's either gonna be filled over or, or, um, disposed of or, or recycled. Um, but, you know, from a stormwater standpoint, I, I just wanna, you know, we far exceed local standards. We exceed state standards. I mean, the approval is valid for only so long. So they have to act on it in order for it to be, you know, valid. And, and so we would just ask to be treated like any other application at that point, so.
So I think the answer to the blasting question was a yes, if necessary.
It's, yeah, probably hammered if I had to guess. I mean, they will, I mean, blasting, I don't anticipate blasting being a thing on this site. Cause it's primarily a fill, you know, a lot of fill. Uh, you know, so they'll normally hammer, you know, something like that. Um, that's what I would anticipate, yeah.
That would, if this was a large scale, that would be what's required in our zoning.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I mean, he owns the rock, he could hammer it if he wants. You know, uh, unless you tell me that that's gonna affect Blood Brook.
No.
Then everybody could have a rock on their property that big and they could hammer it and nobody's gonna stop them.
Correct.
Yeah. So some viewpoint to me, it's a rock.
Just answering the question, but yeah.
Is there anybody on, in the audience, uh, would like to?
Did you wanna say?
Share any more that hasn't spoken yet?
So it's John Hoosley from the Wilton Planning Board for the record. And, um, I want to say a few things. Our, our concern is mostly Blood Brook, of course, you know, cause that goes into Wilton and into the Sowhegan River. And, um, so I stood in Blood Brook looking up the slope on the, uh, sidewalk, you know, is it September seventeenth? And, um, it's quite a, it's quite a ways up. I would say a lot more than thirty feet up from the brook up to where the stone wall is. And it goes above that and it's, it's really steep. I mean, it's like from the brook to the, uh, stone wall in elevation, you know, rise over run, I would say it's like forty-five degrees up really. And, um, I walked the site and I saw the runoff. There's a lot of runoff up where the stone wall is. It's actually washed out a whole section of the wall, probably twenty by ten. It's just actually like a gully right through the wall. It's like it doesn't exist. And, um, so I'm here because the Temple Planning Board said this was regional impact. So that's our concern is the brook. And, um, it's considered regional impact. And, and the Town of Wilton Planning Board would strongly encourage that this board really analyze the slope above Blood Brook, which would include if there's any stone being put on that slope, I mean, disturbing the slope above the brook. And, um, it's really, the whole project is significantly encroaching on the brook. Um, and if, if the, if the board would look at and act, I don't know if the cross section, you know, like elevation down, you know, like a two dimensional view, like looking at elevations, I don't know if that would help. And, um, I really think that, that it encroaches on, I mean, we would think it's, uh, really too large. You know, if, if you look at the impervious area that they're increasing, it's like three times the impervious area. And there was a lot of, uh, like, uh, Randy mentioned, the roots are washed out. That's even further up, but as you come down towards the wall, there was, uh, there's actually gullies in the, in the ground and right up to the slope, right to the stone wall, which is at the top of the slope. And then, um,
Can I just ask, sir, are you representing the Wilton Planning Board or are you speaking, um, for yourself?
I'm representing the Wilton Planning Board specifically and the Town of Wilton. Um, just looking at my notes here.
So are these your personal notes now or are those?
No, this is just, this is what, this is what the Wilton Planning Board, based on what is being said here, you know, and it's all about the brook really, just to put it simply. Just wanted to say a couple more things. Um, oh, uh, George May had mentioned specifically about the two hundred and fifty foot. Have it here, uh, from October fourteenth. Yes, October fourteenth, twenty twenty-four, and it specifically mentions in the one, two, three, four, the fifth paragraph, third line. So generally we ask that all activities stay two hundred and fifty feet from the brook. And I would say that actually that retention pond, I'd like to actually ask, uh, Chad, do you know, how far is the retention pond from the brook? Just, uh, for the record.
The retention pond is about, um, I believe seventy-five feet from the brook. And there's no two hundred and fifty foot setback requirement. We meet all local and state, uh, regulations with this project. So a two hundred and fifty foot setback is a shoreline permit setback. It's not applicable to this brook. And I would also just like to say, we are not proposing any disturbance on the steep section of slope that is being referred to from the brook up to the project. That all exists outside of the property actually. And so we don't have the ability to even disturb that slope.
Well, that, that's good, that's good. Um, but as far as that retention pond, it seems like that should, for the sake of the brook, be quite a ways further back. Seventy feet seems like that's really the most it could be. Uh, from what I, I mean, I was standing there and so it's really close really to the brook, that retention pond, just to be honest. The entire project is very close to the brook, you know, um. If not the whole project, but certainly the basin should be further back somehow, if that's possible, from the brook.
So that, with all due respect, that is an opinion, not a regulation based recommendation.
Okay, yes, certainly, that's what the, uh, that's our concern is the brook. And the basin being so close to it and the steepness of the slope. And that we really would strongly, uh, encourage. And that we really would strongly uh encourage this board to. Give more consideration to the slope and the issues of the slope and the uh elevation and over the brook. That's all. Thank you.
Yeah, I would just say again, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, that. Now I. I appreciate all the the feedback. We've we've really taken. You know, the concerns in stride, we've we've. You know, bolstered the design for this site. We are not proposing any impacts to that steep slope. We're improving the drainage. Um, we're improving, you know, conditions that exist today through the implementation of a well thought out. Um, design um that meets and exceeds your local and state criteria, and so.
You say that one more time, so you're basically mitigating what is not good now.
Absolutely.
And what you're gonna do is actually gonna make it better.
Absolutely. That's correct. And that's.
So all the roots and the trees that are showing and the stone walls and everything that's happened since the eighties, that won't happen anymore.
Correct, and we're capturing and mitigating the stormwater runoff, and so. Uh, we're, you know, we're changing how that's, there's, there's zero. Stormwater mitigation right now, from the highway to the brook, zero. And so we are incorporating a significant design in with this expansion. Um, which will mitigate and and make improvements over the existing conditions, and that's demonstrated. Within the details of the Stormwater Management Report quite clearly um in that table.
I'm gonna put it in layman's terms. There's three buildings there now, and since the eighties, the two gullies. Just they washed out, they destroyed the stone walls, they eroded the banking, the roots in the trees. And now the project's gonna grow. Three times as large and it's gonna get better. Correct, good.
Did you wanna add something else?
Uh, yes, just on impervious soil, I mean, the impervious area. Um, I was there and the the one significant swale that's in the uh soil that runs from near the highway, sort of. All the way past. Where the current proposed would be. Um, it appears that the majority of the water is coming, I'm not an engineer, but it appears that the water is coming from the impervious, not so much from the highway, but rather the. Current. Impervious surfaces of the uh site. And so, of course, it would increase by three times, and that's. Just to. Emphasize the issue of the impact to the work. You can engineer something all you want, but it doesn't change that it's. Three times bigger and it goes right to. The drainage basin that's right above the brook, so to speak. I mean, it's like that, like basically, straight up. That's all.
Russ, uh, we we're fortunate enough to have Russ Huntley, what is it? Could you speak to that impervious? I know we had talked previous meetings, we had, I think we had alluded to that, and you had addressed. The issues with. The soil conditions and there was actual additional soil test requested. Could you, could you, in in your. Engineer terms, can you uh explain to everybody what? Wha- what we have here for?
Well, I think what we're, we were looking at before is. There was that ditch and there was some water sitting on the surface. And um. The site had been graded before, it's obviously flat or something, and probably compacted a little bit. And. So it has some, even though it's wooded, some impervious type surfaces now. And what's happening is this water, it's getting on, and you're right, a lot of it is coming from the three buildings. But it's also coming from every place else, and it's going down that ditch, and that's what's causing erosion now. So. We were worried that maybe, you know, what type of soils were here? That, you know, is this gonna really uh sink in the water? Is it really gonna sink into the soil, or is it just gonna sit there just like it's tar?
Percolate, almost like a septic system.
Um, so we asked for additional test bits and asked for a wetland scientist to come out and reevaluate this. And. I believe they did that, and they, I think they satisfied. Uh, my questions anyways, of whether the soils, uh, where the water table was, whether they would percolate or not, and. Whether this was a wetland, a jurisdictional wetland, or was it uh really a manmade wetland based on the original. Site land and the construction that had occurred at that time. Impervious surfaces now, and you're right, it's gonna be three times as much impervious surface, and I I can see that. I think that's. Kind of obvious from looking at the plan, uh. It's also obviously steep slopes. All of this is to scale and it's on the plan, the contours are here. I. Just from my own education, took New Hampshire LiDAR and. Mapped the site as well. I looked at the contours, because I was afraid that maybe I seen comments about Google contours and. Some other things, so I just wanna see, are these. Contours really this way? Was it really surveyed or not? And. You know, I I agree that. It's the same contours. Uh, I felt comfortable with that. I don't think. There's anything amiss there with the contours or the steepness of the slope. The fact is with their design, I think what they're saying. Is that even though we're gonna have three times the impervious surface. There's no treatment there now, so all the pollutants. Are just heading right to the brook. So if you do nothing, the brook gets more polluted. And I think what they're saying is by doing this, even though they're making more impervious surfaces, they're adding a ton of treatment. And so they're actually reducing the amount. Of pollutants and uh runoff and potential erosion that can happen. And that's what my understanding is what you're saying. And so then, I think that's what we're looking at. I understand the the impervious stuff. Uh, but I think that's what he's explaining to us. Is that as an engineer, they've designed this specifically with that mind, so that they can make it a better site. And I had that. With uh sort of a question too. The fill that was done. Long ago. Would you consider that fill to be impervious? Or relatively impervious? I mean, it's not concrete. But it's, it's not, it's not draining, right?
Not draining, because I'm sure it's compacted a bit.
My, my point being that some of the area that they're planning to build on is already been filled with imber- impervious. Uh, materials. Is that an accurate statement?
I think it's, it's. It's valid in that it's been compacted and, you know, it's not natural, even though. Our existing condition, we assumed a natural condition, but you're right, the area, you know, the area back here. You know, three quarters of that area has been manipulated in the past, compacted and is not really a receptor for stormwater. Um, you know, like one would think, and I think that does general, that's why those two swales were constructed, you know, along the. Um, property and and unfortunately, in the eighties vintage, that's stormwater management. Um, that doesn't pass, you know, today, um.
Yeah, and if I can, and if I can add too, I think part of the that concern over the wetlands that that caused us to go in. In and and have that um. Soil test. Was because the water had been sitting there, because it didn't have any place else to go.
Right.
So there was two or three inches of. Sort of wet. Wetness that that looked, made it look like it was wetlands, which caused us to have concern and get that tested, so. That would add evidence to the fact that it's not percolating well.
Yes, below uh. On Christie's uh land, I mowed that for years and I plowed it for her and stuff. And the soil had built up there pretty well. The the swaths that the storage units are on and her land is a natural. Blood control. Um. Sod, su- super soddy. And was ve- very well developed since. I don't know, the glacier. And uh. So we, we need to think about what. Else can we add to this system in vegetative ways, maybe? Is there any other improvements that you could see that would? Make it even better?
In terms of vegetation?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I will say that, you know, we model. You know, like, for example, the slope here as. You know, basically grass, which is the conservative way to model that after construction. The reality is Mother Nature is going to, you know, take that over, and that's gonna be vegetated over time, because it's. It's not required to be, you know, maintained, so it'll be an unmaintained surface, and. And so that vegetation will come back and mature over time, um, you know, along this area here. Um. And so that'll be an improvement that 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 takes. You know, that that kind of takes over time. Um, but I really think we've, you know, we've incorporated the. Vegetation part, we enlarged that bio-retention area, we've, you know, we've added some landscaping and. You know, we'll work with the neighbor to try to add, you know, some more, I'm sure, but. Um, I think we do meet the, you know, the regulations and. Um. You know, but that that area will fill in, you know, nice over time, so I think it is somewhat misrepresented on the plans because we're disturbing it. But it'll re-vegetate, you know, nicely.
Uh, Randy, are you uh satisfied with your lighting question and your buffering question and the slope?
Um, sure. Well, first of all, I wanted to thank Chuck and certainly the board for listening to me, and I, it's a. Totally wonderful for me to get the information and get the updated knowledge of everything. And I think that we learned a lot tonight and we've gotten a lot out of it. I am happy to do another site walk quickly if anyone wants to go down there, or if that's beneficial. Um. From that standpoint, the thing that I did wanna do with the board specifically is um. Just get your. Decision and the reasoning on the setback. Uh, from the property line for the construction. Which includes the basin. Um, I wanted to get your decision and reasoning on the buffer of the vegetation. And then. Um, the other thing that I would love to do with Chuck is is have a, his his suggestions for the planting. That you talked about. Uh, the no backlight and then um the lighting times, and if it's helpful. I can do a memorandum of what my understanding is of it for the board to consider. And for Chuck to consider and uh go from that. And then kind of see where we, where we are. I don't wanna hold things up, but I think that. It it's important to realize that once a decision has been made, you can't really go back. And so there needs to be some. Intelligent reasoning for the decisions that we make for all of us, for everyone's good. It's not, it's not a selfish thing at all. It's just to. To be sure that this is a good project and that it's well thought through. So that's, those are the thoughts that I had, and if the board would consider. Me submitting my understanding of those things from our discussion tonight, that would be great. So, thank you.
Um, Mr. Chairman, with all due respect, I mean, we're happy to formalize those this evening. But we're well outside of, you know, a sixty-five day time clock now, and we're really hoping that the board would. You know, consider a conditional approval this evening for, you know, this application. Um. And 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 I, I think we've articulated, you know, those, in memorialized. You know, those, those um changes in the plan. Um, this evening, and I'm happy to, you know, kind of touch on those again, but we would hope that the board, you know, can. Uh, render a a decision this evening uh on this project if at all possible.
I wanna just uh speak to Randy's uh question to the board about the buffer. So Christine, do you have our zoning? Uh, what read our, can you read our zoning, what? That currently states uh.
Um, just these are what I looked at earlier, but I can, it's in different sections.
Yeah.
Thirty-five feet from the road, a hundred feet from an existing dwelling, it's a PRD, seventy-five feet. Along streams, but that's in the Mountain Conservation District, fifty-foot wetlands buffer. And ten feet of telecommunications.
Uh.
I think I heard you say seventy feet earlier, Randy, I wrote it down and I didn't. Write anything else other than the number. Did you refer to that?
Seventy feet or which one?
Buffer, did you?
Um, no.
Okay, I don't know why I wrote that. So we don't, it, right now, the VBA, the special exception standards say that the planning board um. Sets the buffer of the setback.
It could be five feet or it could be a hundred feet.
We have no.
So that's what I'm asking you guys for the reasoning behind it and whatever the decision is.
Yeah, I I would say, well, I mean, what what do you, I mean. So what would be fair, what what would you think would be fair for a buffer? I I guess the. My thought process is if you, if you're, if somebody's. Property, if somebody's house was thirty-five feet from that stone wall. I would, I would see that as a red flag. Um, but that doesn't take away from the fact that you're three or whatever, four and a feet away. It's still, that, you know, if you're gonna see it.
Right.
Then, I mean, you have, you to be fair.
Well, I think that, I think that we should consider everyone's views, the river people, the um. You know, all the different folks here. I mean, I'm only just one of the folks, but. I I'm not sure that um. The reservoir is too close to everything, just from a a logistical standpoint, from it really washing out. Um, so I don't know if there's a possibility of changing that. It seems to be the thought of a lot of people that that. Might be too close. It's ten feet from the wall, I believe. Um. So that's a thought. I mean, I'm, my major concerns are the lighting. And um the buffering of the building. So if we can figure out something with the planning and take out the backlight and maybe put some covers on. The lighting units. For me, that's my, that's my main things. Um, I think that. Um. The uh, and that wouldn't hold things up too much, but I think that the planning board needs to come up with some kind of a reasoning. Or whatever they want to accept as the, as the. Setbacks for both the construction and for the buffer.
I'm just looking at the plan here, um. It looks like it's a chain link fence down. By the. The basin here. And it seems to be about ten feet away from the stone wall.
Right.
So I'm assuming that you're not maintaining the other side of the chain link fence, so. Plants are gonna grow between chain link fence and the stone wall anyways. And. He said none of the slopes are gonna be maintained. Mode, let's say.
Correct.
So at some point. In a few years, there's gonna be small bushes and small trees, and at some point, this will probably be wooded again on the slopes.
That's correct.
So I would think your, your buffer, both the light and the uh. Uh, the plants are gonna, at first during constructions, probably be obvious. And I would think that after a bit, it's, it's gonna not look much different than what it looks like now.
Right, it's, it's, I think you have to also think of it like in this room with the top of the bottom of the construction there. It's a lot of plants to grow for sixty years. Um, and you know, I'm not trying to be picky, but. Now is the time to figure out a way, a good way to do it for for everyone is my, is my thought.
Would like a. Planting along the top?
Well, that's what, um, that's what Chuck was in uh suggesting, and then maybe something a little bit on the bottom as well. And I'm, I'm happy to to go and. Do that with you if you want.
I mean, we're willing to work with the owner on planting. Like I said, behind the guardrail at the top, because there's a platform there. Um, and frankly, that would prevent people from plowing snow in that general area, so. Um, I don't think that's a, you know, a bad compromise. I say we would be willing to add, you know, maybe ten. Um, you know, evergreens in in that area, um, six feet tall. Um, and and that'd be a good jump start to landscaping in that area. But I think that in general, you know, the separation and the buffering. Is is there, I mean, we have, we're holding the setbacks from the brook. We're holding, you know, there'll be definitely be that permanent, you know, like you um. Was said uh about the, uh, Mr. Huntley said about the, you know, distance to the chain link fence. Was said, uh, about the, uh, Mr. Huntley said about the, you know, distance to the chain link fence. But we're happy to add, I mean, we're, we're trying to be very reasonable, but we just want to kind of formalize this to a. You know, and 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 agree upon these, I, that would, we're gonna take the light off, we're gonna make the remainder of them motion light. Um, and then we're happy to add, you know, ten, um, evergreens along. The backside of the guardrail, which is, which is the highest point of the, you know, of the site. You know, through there. And so I think. That's hopefully would be reasonable.
I think you're gonna, you would tell us that, uh, which you've already said numerous times tonight, that you meet all of our zoning. Requirements and exceed actually s- some of the state requirements. And that. For us to ask you to alter that plan in a drastic way as to possibly move the retention on. Um, after you've already proven that it exceeds the state standards and it works would would, uh.
And we would consider that being, uh, you know, that would be unreasonable and and frankly, my, you know, we. We wouldn't be able to do that. It compromises the viability.
If you could have, you would have.
Be correct.
Yep, right.
We're trying to do so many other things to help, you know, mitigate, you know, the development and and, uh. Hopefully the board sees that.
I just want to make a couple of clarifications. Um, one is, um. I think we are considering the slope. I don't want you to feel like we haven't looked at that and. Um, just so you know, if this was a residential development, we consider twenty-five percent slope or greater undevelopable. So this wouldn't be permitted if it was residential development. So just so you know, what, like, you know, we are taking this seriously. And also wanted to clarify procedurally, um. We have not accepted this as a final application yet, so that sixty-five day clock hasn't started ticking. And we did determine regional impact, which is why we have someone here from. Wilton and we invited Nashville Regional Planning Commission, SWRPC, which I'm sure you saw their comments as well. Um, so that would mean there's an additional thirty days, and I don't want to drag this out. I'm not trying to. Make it seem that way, and I don't think any of us want to do that, but I just wanted you to be clear on where we are in the process.
Okay, yeah, and I'm sorry for the misunderstanding. Typically, in in it's kind of been supported through state law. Um, accepting public comment prior to accepting an application is not normal in my experience, so I'm sorry that I misunderstood.
Yeah, it is actually, and because we've consulted our attorney on that, and it is ju- just a preliminary design review phase. Um, and we do, in our zoning, we do, um, allow for public comment during that phase, just to make sure that. We're addressing everyone's needs and you're not going back and forth, and we're not denying an application. You know, without prejudice because we don't have all the information. So it's really to your benefit. To go back and forth with us during that process, which you have, you've been very easy to work with. It's not a criticism. Um. I think the process has worked, um, because we are at this point now where we have a better design. Um, but that's, that's the process and we follow the.
I move to close the hearing.
I have one question, just to, just to clarify, if that's okay.
Yeah, yeah. Hold that thought, George.
Um, can you just make sure I'm I'm understanding the, um, the runoff changes? And I'll try to make this like here. Peak flow rates and volumes out of, out of your document, so if I look at the fifty-year.
Yeah.
Fifty-year runoff, um, you're basically after development. Uh, we'll have about half the flow rate that exists today, and that's.
That's correct. Yep, so it goes from twenty-one point oh nine cubic feet per second to eleven point eight nine. Which is a reduction of nine point three zero in the flow. That's correct.
We need to do it.
And that's very different than from the earlier, earlier designs we presented.
Yeah, I mean, we added the chamber system, and so we've added a lot more volume and storage, you know, in this capacity, in this system. That's correct.
I thought I was getting it right, so I make sure.
Thank you, George.
So there's a motion.
All right, the motion's on the table.
We have a second. George motion is to close the hearing.
If if no one else has commented.
Okay, yeah, a second. Do you vote, Carter?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, the hearing is now officially closed. All right, so now. What are the next?
Do we feel like the application is complete and up for us to make a motion to accept it as complete?
I do.
I do.
So is that?
With 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 the, uh. Working with Randy, the butter. For the buffering concerns and the lighting concerns being addressed as a. Condition.
Right, I think that, I mean, we could accept the application as complete and come back again in two weeks and give. Randy time to.
Yep. Okay.
And that starts the clock ticking.
Wouldn't have conditions to prove that the application is complete.
We're not rendering a decision on the application. We're just saying the application is complete. They've submitted everything that we've asked for. And then we would move on to deliberations.
We're just saying right now, is the application completed?
Yes.
Yes, it is.
So there, we need a motion then.
I'll make that motion. I'm moved that the application is complete.
It is, it'll be accepted as complete. Second, I'll buy Jim.
Yeah.
Okay.
Carter, do you vote?
Yes.
Yes.
I go yes.
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 Yes, yes.
Okay, your clock is ticking. Ninety-five days. So then, um.
So we're gonna postpone this for another two weeks?
If we want to give Randy, um, the butter some time to work with. The applicant to come up with an appropriate setback. And plantings and lighting. Are you open to that?
What you thought we were at an agreement on that, weren't we?
So what I have, I can, which is my notes, and and if others have taken notes, you can correct me, but I have the green snow pro sort of condition. Green snow pro removal as a condition of approval, removing the backlight on the building. Um, the operating times restricting to, um, motion lights between ten PM and six AM. And, um, planting evergreens behind the guardrails near the parking lot.
Is that a motion?
I'm not putting it out as a motion. I'm just saying this is what I have, and you can correct me if I'm.
And I I guess I would just that it was gonna be planting evergreens to to your liking as in a butter.
Ten of them?
Randy voiced his opinion or or feelings on your two biggest concerns with the lighting and the buffer.
That would be the condition. I move that we have the patria holding a conditional approval. In, in considering Randy Martin's proposal.
As well as the other three.
Yes.
There are four items.
That Christine had mentioned.
Um, and the other one would also be, of course, um, state approvals, DES, whatever else you need. I think there was a. You need a permit for the road, is that correct, for the driveway? DOT. Okay, nothing EPA?
EPA is a construction permit, so it's not something that would be part of a local.
Yeah, it's just something we put in our. Okay, so our generic statement is until all other certifications are obtained.
That is fine, but that's not typical requirement for any local approval because. You can't satisfy.
Right. Right.
That doesn't happen until you send a product out, you can't do that until you finance, and you can't have that until the plan is signed. And so we would add that to the plan. It normally doesn't be a requirement prior to submission of a building permit.
Right.
Then you're happy to.
Okay.
Just to be clear on the motion, right, the the conditions are the ten, ten evergreens. The motion sensing, the daytime, the things you, basically everything you listed. And. That, um, that they would work together on the location of those evergreens, right? Not additional changes or conditions. Does that make sense?
Unless there's any that have to carry forward from the ZDA. They were, they were already.
Well, that means we're not addressing setbacks down.
Yeah.
Um, up close to the ten foot.
Yeah, so we have a request to, you know, define the setback and explain why. Um, because right now it's undefined.
So can that be reasonably, uh, agreed upon that we have an action on our side? At a future date to to take a look at our setback statements and and make. You know, a recommendation on how to address visual setbacks or something like that. Does that make sense?
For this specific application or in gen?
Talking in general.
Yeah, so that would not be part of their their application.
That's what I'm saying is to to, I'm I'm basically suggesting that that we take that, that concern.
Yes.
As deal with in the future and not with this particular project, if that makes sense.
Yes.
I I I just want to say for for me personally, an example, I, my, my property board is on Limeboro. And, uh, when, when I was looking at the property, my neighbor was all wooded. And then we went, we went through the process to buy it and we drove out to the site. One day and all of the, all of the trees were gone.
Hmm.
So we couldn't barely even see the place and now. You know, it's right there, but, you know, it was a different town. I didn't know any better, but. So I can understand, I can appreciate the concern over having a visual concern on setback.
Well, and and another big example is if I stock fifteen hundred dollars or two thousand dollars with a gap. And all of a sudden, there's a rainstorm and all the waters, and all the fish die, it's, and then back on the business.
Yeah.
I mean, there's a lot of other things, it's, it's, it's being set by the board by the buffer.
Yeah.
Want to point out that we believe that the plan meets all the buffering requirements and the. The section that's being talked about is a, is part of a special exception. Requirement, I believe, if I'm not mistaken. The special exception that we have has no such conditions on it. Um, the conditions for our special exception were no further expansion of the site will be allowed. The maximum square footage is, you know, list the square footage that we're proposing. All buildings shall be single story. It it talks about the standard operations. They actually. Um, say it shall be six AM to nine PM. Um, and so that. That actually needs to be corrected on the, on the plan, um, because it's not twenty-four seven based on the special exception, so. I'm sorry about that. We should have caught that one. Um, and then it says no outdoor storage of any. Uh, type will be allowed. Those are our conditions on our special exception. Um, we believe that the plan that we have. Because we have the special exception does meet the the requi- the requirements, but with that said. We're not opposed, you know, the ten-foot minimum setback is is the obvious easy one because. Of the fence that we're proposing, but then in addition to that, we have the eight unmaintained slope. And then we're willing to do the ten, you know, um, evergreens and work with the butter on the location. And then we're willing to, um, modify the lighting for the site. So I think. Our hope is that the combination of all of those things addresses the setback. Um, standard for this project as it relates to that side. And we obviously have the. You know, we are meeting the setback to the brook and and such, but. Um, I just wanted to offer that and I don't, I could be wrong in my un- understanding, but I just wanted to offer that. Because I had this conditions of the special exception here, if that was at all helpful.
Yeah, so our, um, zoning ordinance, if you look at our zoning ordinance, um, section thirteen A, item number seven. Is where it says appropriate buffering landscaping shall be provided within the setback areas. Of a type and amount deemed appropriate by the planning board during site plan review.
I I wasn't missing that piece, but there was something for us to the special exceptions, so I just. Thought I'd do those conditions.
Yeah, they probably should have told you during the ZBA process.
But we won't, we haven't addressed those.
Uh, I guess Christine and, um. Bruce, I, I don't feel like we're in a good place to take a vote on this. I do think that we need to address this buffer issue. That's where I'm coming from personally. Not in our zoning, unfortunately. We had, I had SWRPC look at it as well, um, and. You know, that's one of the areas they identified as being weak in our zoning. Stormwater runoff being another one. So, um, we have applied for a grant to look specifically at some of these issues we haven't heard yet. If we. Received that grant, we probably won't know for a couple more weeks, but. See if that gets approved, then over the next year and a half or so, we'll be looking at that. I'm sure we'll be reaching out to the Conservation Commission as well.
So by, Carter, by not voting on this, what do we hope to gain?
I'd like.
In regards, in regards.
To have an answer to Randy's buffer question.
No, I know, but I I understand that.
So if we can do that tonight, then let's do that.
I'd like to hear from. Some more, some of the other members, I guess.
I feel there's, there's already two buffers. There's the. Constructed buffer that they're making, the ten, the fence ten feet off the property. And then there's also a fifty-foot buffer to the stream that. Nobody else can use any of it. It's a natural buffer. It can't be built on it because. The fifty-foot setback to the stream, so. If only a big buffer occurring either naturally or or constructed per this plan. Whether it's on the property, it's on your property, the fifty-foot buffer, but you can't clear it either. So it's, it's still a buffer. I think.
So we're saying that ten feet from the property line is appropriate?
I think so. I mean, there's plenty, if you look at. Any place around town or any place, anytime, people's yards, people's fields, go right up to property lines and stone walls. I think it's sort of inappropriate to say that, oh, in this case, you can't, we have to have fifty feet away from here, so I know, that's. I don't think that's correct.
I I would say that. I agree and disagree in a way, because I would, I would say that I was ready. To 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 try and clarify and get to a point where I thought everybody was satisfied. With this and we could move forward and I'd take that as a, as an action for later. Um. But to add to that is I would say that there's a difference between in-town and and rural when it comes to. You know, that when you, when you buy. Large number of acres outside, you're, you have a certain expectation that you've got some kind of buffering between you and your neighbors. Right? Um, and um, and you try and work that, you know, and and. You might, you you know, there could be an argument here that that this is being encroached from this side, but. Um, but that's my two cents. So I I my point is, is I was ready to. To 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 move forward and vote on this, but if there's still a outstanding concern over the buffer, then.
Is it, is it ten or five feet from the property line?
It would be ten to the fence, but I also think the key component here is that when we have these. Slopes that can be unmaintained and we're willing to do additional bendings on top. Of the hill behind the garden. All of those together are improvements. On our property that we offer, I think, could be part of the decision for the board from this project.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and would still fall within the board's purview under what my understanding of the section means. And then you also have, and I think Mr. Huntley is correct, it's actually more than a hundred foot off, or because both sides of the brook. Um, and and then the width of the brook, that will naturally exist between the properties, even though that would be in addition. Um, but I'm hoping the board would consider that for this application. I don't disagree that this is part of the regulations to recent items. Um, but I'm hoping the board would consider all those factors. And the ten evergreens come with the additional condition that we're going to work. With the butter in place those in the location that he's satisfied. And so there's another layer of of bringing to um this this condition and so. I'm asking the board to consider that appropriate for a buffer or the north side of of this project and I'm hoping that. With all, although there's a lot of details here, with all the little pieces that that's appropriate.
Okay. Anybody else?
Not so much on buffering, but we do have a letter from Christine Reed that we really haven't. Discussed here tonight.
He didn't.
Yeah, exactly.
We did, yeah, okay.
Yeah, he did.
All right, so let me make sure, make sure it was.
Oh, yeah.
We we did look at her. Okay.
Yeah, I I feel like we've addressed them.
I think we have. So I I didn't, I didn't see anything. I just want to make sure that we. Yeah, you know. We acknowledge that.
So Randy, um, as far as. The planning of the evergreens and we was, we saw the lighting, I think, in the planning of the evergreens. Uh, I don't. I don't think we have a consensus here on the board about the buffer as far as. What exactly would you expect or what if you, what what if you would liked to have happened from your stone wall to the retention pond?
And it's um. Pretty. The lead for the end, I mean, um, how many are the most centers? Um, that's intense. Um, and I guess. I mean, I didn't want the board to set a precedent. And then.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. No, for uh, obviously, we, uh, for the record, we. We've all acknowledged this discussion about the buffer and for. Uh, it should be a a future conversation for us as a board, uh, as a town. To um. Come up with some sort of regulation or some sort of standard to so this kind of issue doesn't come up again.
The buffer is out. Director, you want me to break through the last? Because it's done, or my hope, my hope is that we can get a conditional approval that you and I can meet and actually pick the approval. And then I'll get a signature from you that said that you're happy with this initiative and we'll submit that to the board. Decide whether or not we're in an issue.
Yeah, so we would put something in the conditions of approval.
Yeah.
And then you can close the loop for us before everything is finalized.
Yeah, that would be perfect.
So George, going back to your motions, could you state your motion again, please?
Well, I moved it once, but we didn't get a second.
I know. Could you make the motion again?
I move that we give uh. Patriot Halling permission, conditional approval to continue with their work. It's with the uh. Divisions that Christine has written down.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Carter, how do you vote?
No.
George?
Yeah.
I vote yes.
Yes.
Just one clarification. Are we on the conditions that we listed? Are we clear on the times? Because there was a couple of different times discussed here tonight.
Or the operating times? I have motion lights from ten PM to six AM.
So the hour of operation will be sixteen and nine PM.
Nine PM.
Yeah.
So the motion lights would be nine PM to six AM. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Murray, how do you, I guess?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Motion passes.
You want me to draft something?
Yes, please.
Thank you.
I think we uh get something to you in writing within five days, if not sooner. It's our. I know I can't do it tomorrow, so.
Okay.
Thank you for coming. We will, for sure.
All right, new uh. I think what we'll do now, because it's quarter past nine, I would just want to look at the agenda. Um, and just. Discuss real quick. Obviously, we're not going to be able to. To do much else, but uh, was there anything on that agenda that is a must happen tonight?
I mean, Russ could probably give a quick budget update and then, right?
Yeah.
Sorry, hang on, because um Kathy can't hear. Do you, do you guys mind taking the conversation out, Lincoln? Could you guys talk outside just so we can finish up here? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thanks.
CIP approved our, I guess, operating budget for the year.
The BAC.
The BAC. Well, it was a joint.
Joint meeting.
Yeah. Um, and also the GIS. Uh, proposals that we had put forward. Uh, they approved that, so on the second of December, we have a meeting. To write up uh. An article for uh, I guess, two articles. For the town meeting. Um.
Do you need anybody else to go with you? Are you good?
Um, if you wanted to come along, I mean, I haven't written an article. I don't know if I have to write it. We have to write it or if we just all write it there together. They all seem to think that. It was just going to get written. I wasn't sure how that worked.
The selectmen will, the select. Yeah, or they, or they'll bring it to legal.
Legal, yeah.
Yeah, uh, the warrant articles. If you're, if you approve them, then you you submit them to uh our legal.
Right.
Um, to make sure they're written properly.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're not, we don't have to write anything.
DRA also has.
I think you have to write like the gist of it.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
Yeah.
Then they can take it.
They'll tweet it.
There's an applicable process.
Okay, yeah.
It's above our pay grade.
Yeah.
Was there anything else on the agenda that we should really talk, I mean, we can't talk about everything, so it.
No, it, well, I mean, I guess from my perspective, the. Proposed zoning amendments are time sensitive because we had planned on having a hearing in December.
I know.
So um, I can pass these out and. Have enough.
Is this the new, the one you emailed the other day?
No, this is a new version.
Oh.
So I sent it to the Office of Planning and Development. I think I might be sure. But it's good, we're good. Um, and I'll send it to you electronically. I sent it to the Office of Planning and Development for a first pass. It's a free review, technical review. Um, we tabled the first one, I think, because um, we weren't ready to talk about it. Not everyone was here. Every, the second one was fine, the off-street parking, the multiple dwellings. Their comment was, we. Called it multi-family dwellings and they thought it might be confusing because we use that term in workforce housing. And we're not talking about workforce housing zoning here, so they recommended and we can overrule. But they recommended, we call it residential conversions to multi-family dwellings, just for more clarity.
That sounds good.
Yeah, that does.
Um, we made a note last time to talk about where we wanted to include owner um. Occupancy or at least owner occupancy at the time of application, which is what we currently do. In ADUs and. Um, we don't have that provision in detached ADUs and we should probably talk about it in the multi-family dwelling conversions for consistency. Um, which we can do now or we can table on just. Give an overview right now. Um, on the attached, uh, on the. Comment, we were struggling or the criteria we were struggling with on. If what if someone wants to make it bigger? Um, they said that's actually not a special exception. That would be a variance and they're already entitled to that in our zoning, so we don't need to include. That language we can, just so people know, but we don't need to include that.
If they wanted larger than fifteen hundred square foot detached, they go for a variance. Okay.
Exactly. So we don't have to have anything additional in our zoning around that. They can do that right now.
Mm-hmm.
Um. Let's see. Same for detached and then on the multi-family dwelling conversions, which we said we would change the name to, which I didn't. Residential. What do you call it?
Conversion.
Residential conversions. Um. Everything was fine except seven C dot forty, where we say the maximum number of units. Would be determined by the planning board. They felt that was too vague. We should have something in there, whether it's a minimum square footage or. Maximum square, you know, some sort of. Um, criteria in there, which I haven't. Seen anything yet around that, but that was something to consider. And then on the only one entrance from the public street. They recommended removing this because there are homes, as you pointed out at our last meeting, that have already have more than one and we would want to exclude them.
Right.
Somebody wanted to do that. Otherwise, um, everything else was fine.
So these are. On the residential conversions, the seven C forty. So what they say is we should come up with a number of units?
Or some, what criteria would we look at?
Right.
To determine what's is. What's a number of units? So if a house is, I don't know, four thousand square feet, like, you know, how many would we allow in that? Unit, that kind of thing.
Oh, yeah, percent, percentage or something, yeah.
Yeah. I don't want to contradict our EDU zoning, so it's like one of those, it's tricky. Right, right, the minimum, yes. So it's something.
Wouldn't want to have. Lot of space.
Right.
Right.
Maybe a reasonable. What's the smallest tiny?
Under four hundred square feet.
Yeah. I know, around the four hundred.
Yeah.
Is there maybe? It's gotta be something a bit for human occupancy. Minimums.
I mean, people are converting school buses and.
They are, I know.
With vans, I mean, that's.
Living sort of thing, but I get it. I I.
Yeah, and there are people that live in tiny, tiny homes.
Looked at my, I've been five more years.
Yeah, but do we want, I mean, I get that you want it to be at. At the discretion of the planning board, but shouldn't we have a cap on it? I like, do we want ten families going in? I mean, like, what are we, you know, how we?
Right, yeah, we want to have a number.
Right.
Sort of address the maximum number of.
Yeah.
Units in a house.
I think.
This would be.
Size. Of an accessory dwelling unit. And it's, it's on the same property as the main place. You're still going to meet septic and water requirement.
Right.
So I don't know how you figure out how much water a family uses every day.
I think it's by.
But I think it would be one of the.
Isn't it by bedroom?
It's by bedroom.
By bedroom.
Yeah. Well, septic's by bedroom.
Septic is not water. Can, can I ask a question related to that? But what does written approval of septic and water mean? Who's writing that approval?
Our town health officer.
Can we put that in there? It's like, again, that.
Yeah. Don't we have that already? Yeah, we have that under seven C sixty-five. Next page. We, we already say written approval?
Uh, it's.
Oh, you mean by.
But but by who? When I read it, um, I didn't know.
I see, okay. So on the building permit, it's with, um, there's signatures for the road agent and the health.
Okay, maybe that's fine, then. It just wasn't clear when I was.
Yeah, because it references building permit that.
That's fine.
Triggers the the three.
Go back to the state.
Yep, right.
Okay.
Yeah, you're not going to get your building permit without uh. The health officer signing off, yeah.
Right.
Okay.
So do we want to say minimum square footage then, or do we want to um base it on? Septic capacity or?
So the maximum number of dwelling units in a multi-family conversion. Shall be determined by the planning board during site plan review.
I think it should just be a number of units. Why would it be?
Yeah.
Uh.
And they could always ask for a variance if they wanted more.
So the only precedent we have in town set is three.
Three, right.
We have three, several locations. We have three.
You got to think of most houses too, like, we're talking conversions, so farmhouses. You can't put a whole lot.
No.
Not going to get more than three, probably.
Well, does Ken, does he have? Three units or four, three?
There was three there, I think, uh, at one time.
I I would say three or four would be like the max.
Yeah. Well, this precedent's been set for pretty much three in Temple, why don't we just go with three?
Yeah.
You want three?
If we're just going to pick a number. Three or four, yeah.
And then can a multi-family have an attached ADU?
Um, attached, it, well, it would. No, no, because that's just.
I'm just, I'm asking.
Right.
No.
No, I'd say, no.
No.
Yeah.
Cause that would just be another.
Yeah.
So so it becomes another, like, on the tax card, it's listed as something different, is that?
No, it's, it's still listed as, like, right now, a single-family home with an attached ADU is a two-family.
So it has a detached ADU?
You can have a detached, though.
It's a separate tax card. But in this case, no, because we said you can't have any existing other existing residential properties. You can only have one existing property. So you can't have a detached if you have a multi-family.
If, so if you have, but if you have a.
Oh, yeah.
If you have an attached ADU, you can have a detached as well.
So it's still three.
But you can't have a multi-family.
But I was just wondering, you turn it into a three-family and you're like, wow, I'm going to put a garage on and I'm going to put an ADU in it, right?
Yeah.
Okay. But couldn't they, because? Are we saying they can't?
Well, if we're saying only three units.
Essentially, we're saying three units.
So that's kind of.
Between attached, detached and regular.
Right.
Or.
Oh, yeah, we've already, we've already established that with a primary residence, an attached ADU and a detached is three units.
Three, so then, or you can have your one big house and turn it into three.
Or you could turn it into three, so three is the magical number.
Okay. All right. And what about the owner occupancy question?
What was the question? Should it be?
So right now, our zoner zoning for attached ADU says the owner must be a legal resident of the property at the time of the application. We don't require that for detached? And should we require it there? Should we require it for a multi-family conversion or residential conversions to a multi-family? Or do we want to change that in any way? I think, Murray, you brought this up.
Yeah, so I, I think it, if we, we require it for attached, the purpose of a. Detached ADU is to provide an additional housing unit. Um, for that, you know, essentially for that owner's family unit is the original concept of it. Um, so I think, I think having that as the same requirement for attached and detached makes sense.
Mm-hmm.
Um. In a residential conversion. It really comes down to what, what do we? How do we want that to be utilized in the town of Temple? Is it someone with a. Large house that they want to, you know, divide up into. Up to three units? Or is it, hey, I'm selling my large house and. Or is it, hey, I'm selling my large house and an investor comes in and says, oh, I can get three units worth of rent out of it. Therefore, the value is theirs, therefore, I'm going to buy it and convert it and rent it.
And then sell all the land and build many houses around it.
Which on a large.
Could happen.
Um and that could happen, that could happen now, what what the difference is, is. Are we doing the conversion for the benefit of the current resident to add units? Or for the for the purposes of an outside investor to purchase the property and leverage it to the. You know, best income they can they can create. And that's the difference between an auto-occupied at time of application and it's just a investment property on the market.
Well, and it's tricky because as you pointed out, we have single-family homes that are rentals right now in town.
But that doesn't mean that it's okay and that we. That's not a judge.
I agree with you.
More about consistency.
I I agree.
But it's not, that those aren't legal three units, so what, we shouldn't say, well, just because there are some means that. We should change our zoning to match that.
I I agree with you, Carter, I I just, I'll. I agree with you, I'm just saying, we've set the precedent in Temple, the zoning board, uh the Old Brook School. Turned that into uh the the builder, the developer, who lives in Amherst, I think. Never lived in Temple, they approved the three apartments there.
Yeah.
And so we have a, we have a, we have that that investor, like, we keep talking about that investor, that's what these guys were, and they don't live here, and.
It's like a commercial space turning residential versus like a somebody's house, that wasn't.
Then the old uh the uh the old um. Right next door. Um the Treadwells owned it, they had uh three apartments there.
Yeah.
And they, but they did live on Revrow. So they lived in town, but they weren't owner occupied, there was three different families living there.
But now it is on.
And Matt Navy on the, Matt Navy on the Birchwood Inn, and there's three apartments in there, and they live, you know, across town.
So they predated zoning.
So I guess I'm just saying, I'm okay with what you're saying, I'm just saying legally, somebody could challenge that. Um but but I but I could, I understand the concern, I I don't know how, I just. We've we've allowed it, so I think that we've allowed it, so somebody.
We haven't allowed it, they didn't, did they apply for building permit?
Well, they. The brick school, they went, yeah, they went through the Z B A.
That's was through a special exception.
Right, right.
In a commercial building, not in a.
All the other ones just happened, I'm sure, over the years, yeah.
Yeah, so so the language that's in our attached dwelling unit is, you know, owner occupied at the time of application. Um it doesn't mean it's permanent, it's really, it's really hard to enforce. You know, fifty years from now, is there's, is the people, are the people living here still owners, but. It, in my opinion, it sets sort of the precedence of, hey, this is meant to help people, local. You know, people who are local to the town versus create a large investment opportunity for. For others outside. That's all.
I agree.
Yeah, yeah, I think if if if, so if if I built a house. And uh one of my children, and I'm the owner, and then I moved out and moved to Wilton. But I wanted my son to live there or my daughter. That would, I mean, that. That that's, that's a little different, right? But I mean, how do you, so we just look the other way when that happens and.
Yeah, but you probably wouldn't. I mean, eh eh you know, if you were an investor, like, you're you're not gonna buy a house and you can't. Like, actually occupy it for a week and call it owner occupancy, so.
I'm perfectly okay, I'm not arguing against this thing, I'm just throwing out there, that would be a pretty simple thing if I was an investor. To get around. I'm fine with the uh.
And all for all three, is that what I'm hearing?
Could be consistent, shouldn't it?
Yes. Okay.
Now you know why we waited to have this discussion, because we wanted to have a full board on that, because we knew that was a sensitive issue.
So I'll add that to all three. And um. I guess the question is, when do we want to have the hearing? The first hearing, and we can make changes after the first hearing, just to keep that in mind.
Second meeting in December?
Second meeting in December.
Although we could do first meeting in January, but uh and we're cutting it close to get the second one.
No, I think we should do it in December, because we're all.
Oh, that's right, that backfired last year, didn't it?
Eh and Christine, this last one is for the Z B A, is that right?
Right.
This is the like updates that we have to make.
Yep.
From last year's.
Petition.
Yeah, yeah.
What about this first one, the permissive ordinance, do you?
I'm still, I, I have been out of town since our last meeting up until about two hours before this meeting, so um I'm doing a lot of.
So.
Talk to some folks.
So I think what the procedurally, what we do at our next meeting is we vote on each one.
Yep.
And then um put it out immediately after.
Yep.
For a hearing in the second meeting in December. So if you have different language, would you want to use for that, bring it?
Yep.
To our next meeting. Otherwise, I'll just leave it out of this.
I'm I'm personally leaning towards not being in favor myself of the permit, of that permissive.
I am not in favor.
Yeah, but. But we have a board, we have a board, so if we're outnumbered, we're outnumbered.
Well, let's, let's, yeah, let's, let's talk about that for a second, I mean, the reason why I'm right, it's the reason I think it's important, it's all it's doing. Is documenting the fact, the fact of our current zoning today. It is, our our zoning is a permissive ordinance per the lawyers who've looked at it with the past.
And the Supreme Court.
And the Supreme Court as well, thank you. If it's not clear to people when they read it. Um that can lead to misunderstandings. Um so this is purely a uh proposal to clarify. That's all.
It's the protection for the town.
Right. Um it's, you know, if you look, if you read through. If you read through our zoning, it says, hey, in the residential district, you're allowed to do the following. In the Mountain Rural District, you're allowed to do the following. Um and this just says, hey, if it's not listed. Then, you know, it it uh it's either, it's either allowed or it's by a special exception. That's all.
Can you share what your specific concerns are, Carter and Bruce?
I guess I was um. Brainwashed by three or four individuals in town and uh. I'd need to revisit what they said and what they wrote. Nicole Concordia. And uh Jim Kingston and my uncle and a couple other people just really sold me on that it wasn't a good thing, but I I'm in fairness. To the board, I'm gonna go back, because it's been a year. And I'm gonna re, I'm gonna talk to some people and I'm gonna. Keep an open mind, and I'm just, you know, I'm not gonna.
Yeah, I think I need to go back to that as well, but I mean, essentially. You know, what it's doing is strictly defining it as per permissive and and in order to do that too, I do think we'd have to go through and read our zoning. Zoning ordinance in detail and confirm that we do truly believe that it's permissive. And I'm not sure, are we doing that? Before we add that language to it, I. So, but. We can discuss that more next time.
Yeah, I'm just trying to remember what the lawyer said about it.
Yeah.
I think he said that ours was kind of a combination. Our zoning, he said. Also.
Permissive and prohibitive.
Right.
So if we define it as permissive only, then it's not. Doesn't always make sense.
Didn't you use the example of the um, the um. What's their name? Like the lawsuit, the uh.
Marsh.
The marshals, the marshals, didn't you use that example?
When he was explaining the permission zone.
Yeah.
Yeah, because it's. Right, yeah, I think what he said was saying was that. The courts determined that our zoning was a permissive ordinance. Um but we allow everything, literally anything could be built in town right now.
Oh, yeah, and then we brought up the gentleman's club.
Right.
Yeah, I remember this conversation here going up.
Couldn't we go anywhere?
Yeah.
Other than, you know. And that was, that was the concern. But unless we define, as you said, what we allow, what we don't allow. We still allow.
It's as simple as adding that text to our zoning without. Truly. Understanding what that, the implications are throughout this zoning.
I'll come back to the next meeting myself, I'm gonna do my homework and I'll come back with a better understanding of what.
I can't picture what the.
All right, are we uh, we're just gonna, we have, we can't do. I think we're not gonna do the, we're not gonna do the master plan, we're not gonna do the, I mean, the land lose, but you'd land use, we're not gonna do the driveway regulations, but not gonna. Yeah, you do, yeah, I think that was.
Okay. So then um I will update based on the conversation we had tonight. And you're back with another.
I make a motion. How do you vote?
Yes.
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 Yes, yes. Adjourned.
Yes, meeting adjourned.